Thank you very much for joining us this evening for the SC-1, CC-1 school board meeting. Uh, it is 6:07 and quite officially, I'm the board committee.
Nelson, Lanier?
Here.
Tron, Eric Flacken, Mary House?
Here.
Lee Strunk, Eric, Grace.
Here. Lauren, Margaret. First, I am on the agenda is Harvey Connors and Tim Ng.
Hello, um, I really don't want to be here tonight. I've been nervous for about an hour. I think I spoke to the board about three years ago, I think, um, and I share some of the same concerns I had three years ago, um, as we're, but I'm, I'm here tonight because I want Parker to be better. I, I think that it can be better. Um, I think we all have a shared interest in Parker. Um, I want what's best for our students. I want what's best for our colleagues, my colleagues. And obviously, we can have another new principal at Parker. Um, and we're valuing our history. I mean, we've had a, a new principal every two or three years for about 10 years. I didn't do the exact math, but I think that's thought what it's been. Um, and I think if you had any school in that position or any team or anything like that, I think that things could be better than they are. I don't think that's good. It would be better to be having somebody, um, stay for longer. Um, when I spoke before, I stated that, um, I didn't think that we had necessary policies and procedures in place, um, to address just normal things that happen at any junior high. I mean, there's things that all of us should expect to happen at a junior high. And we need to have a plan and have clear and safe plans. This is how we're going to deal with this, and this is how we're going to deal with this. In my, in my classroom, my, my, I mean, it's, it's real clear that I need to have, you know, a plan for how I'm going to address these things. But I know that they're going to happen. I, I want to share them with students so that they know this is how I'm going to address things. I think consistency and clarity, communication is really, really important, whether you're in the classroom or, um, you're leading the building. Right now, I don't think that we have very many things in place. And so I guess I'm looking forward, I'm not trying to, trying to use what we have right now and take it so that we pick the best candidate for Parker. And to me, what doesn't get a lot of attention, but I think is very important, is that whoever we select, I think, really needs to come in and put in place all of those policies and procedures, like, hey, staff, this is, we all know that we're trying to deal with this, and we're trying to deal with this. That's not anything against Parker. That's just how junior highs are. That's how, that's how teenagers are, right? Um, and that's not high on anybody's list, you know? Like, when we're looking at all these great resumes and things like that, they have all these outstanding volleys, and there's all this educational stuff that we can talk about, but it's really what's important is those building blocks. Um, I was thinking about this when I was watching football yesterday. And I mean, for any, any good team, I mean, you can have all these fancy plays, but you've got to have the fundamentals down. Like, those are really, really important and have everybody be on the same page. And just because of the turnover that we've had in our leadership, I, I think that's something that's getting overlooked as we look at, you know, there's, there's all these great things. There's still lots of great things that are happening at Parker, but those foundational things need to be rebuilt because our staff doesn't know how we should respond to certain things. Like, we just, there's not clarity on that because of, we've had this principal, and then this principal, and this principal. I, I don't think I'm saying anything that's like, I don't think controversial like at all. And again, I'm not here to, I'm here because I have a shared interest with everybody else. Um, and so I would just encourage you, when you're looking at these candidates, who can implement those policies and procedures? And, and I think that it would be great if we had a little bit more time at the beginning of the year while we're looking at those beginning of the year days. Like, this year, I kind of wish that we had maybe one more day because of COVID stuff. Um, I, I really think that would be beneficial. I don't think that we should shy away from, from talking about, hey, this happens. I think this is the best way that we should deal with this. Like, that's a conversation that we should be able to have. I have it with my students in my classroom. You know, we can do our social contract, and I get to know them, and after, after we get some STEM activities going, then I say, hey, just so that we're clear, like, these are things that, that might happen in here, and I just want you to know, like, where I stand and what I expect, and this is how I'm going to handle this situation, so that nobody thinks, like, I'm being biased or I'm being, you know, it's about them. Well, then they can say, oh, well, that's what he said he was going to do before anybody did it, so they don't think, like, it's about, it's not personal. It's just, this, these aren't the standards, right? And I think that's really, really important. And so I, I hope that's taken into consideration because from my perspective, and I think I share a common perspective of people that have been at Parker for 16 years, that that's really an important piece. And it's, you know, you're interviewing the coach, you're, they're gonna, there's all these things, you know? But like, can they come in and refocus the players on the crunch moments and be disciplined and not get penalties? Like, all, all of those things are, are crucial. They're not whatever everybody wants to talk about, but they're really, really important. And so I wrote, like, three pages. I put down, like, 10, and I do, I wouldn't stick to it, but, um, I think I made my point. I, I really, really think that's important, and so I hope that when you look at the candidates, you look at who's been able to do that in the past, um, who will be able to do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you taking your time. And if you want to share that with Jeff, please do it. Either with us or email either way at some page.
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
If you'd like to email that or share that, I'll be happy to share that with the board, certainly for my benefit as a work.
I have lots of thoughts. I think we should do middle school model. I think, like, a whole bunch of things that would really help Parker.
We'd love to see anything.
Yeah, sure.
I can probably write a lot better than Ted can speak, so.
You can email it, email it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, Dr. Lisa Christina?
Thank you. I want to applaud the board, first of all, for their decision following the Supreme Court ruling on the unconstitutionality of vaccine mandates, um, that the teachers that were still holding out for health or religious exemptions will not be forced to get these COVID vaccines. Uh, but it is also my understanding that only these few that will remain at the end were notified of this change in policy. I have served on faculty at East Prairie State College, DePaul University, Calumet College, St. Joseph's, and IU Northwest, Indiana University Northwest. And if a major change in policy that affected all faculty members was made by the higher-ups, everyone was notified, not just a handful of people. So I urge you, if you have not already done so, to let all affected staff and faculty know about this major change in policy because it could affect their decisions in the future about getting boosters. You don't know, you know, if any of them had any adverse effects or are having misgivings about getting any further shots. And the last thing I think you want to do at this point is make them feel like they're being forced. So I, I just urge you, please notify everyone because this is a major change in policy. And again, I do applaud you for making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have the agenda.
Absolutely. Well, it's a perfect time for the update because we have a lot going on in District 1, CC-1 this week. Tomorrow, February 1st, indicating the start of Black History Month, and like last year, uh, the District 1, CC-1 will be at only the Village of Flossmore, for the Flossmore Public Library appropriately flying the American liberation flag, intended with the American flag for the next month. We're thankful to Mr. Aaron Ram for spearheading this initiative in the community and including us in the work. So we're ready to get that started tomorrow. As Mr. Gravine alluded to, we're also scheduled to host our finalists for the Parker Junior High School principal position this coming Thursday. Final candidates have a variety of experiences that make them both qualified for the position, and we're looking forward to asking additional questions and really moving into the demonstration part of the interview process. We're offering a lot of questions around to what you can actually do. So some questions, a lot of demonstrating, of pushing, writing, presenting, et cetera. So we're seeking, as everyone knows, that dynamic, you know, that all world leader for the school. Somebody who's student center and is focused on supporting staff members, provide a lot of clarity about implementing the board's vision for Parker Junior High School and what that looks like, not only in the building, but also the classroom level. If all goes well, we should have a recommendation to the Board of Education on February 14th, which will be our next action meeting. Having said all of that, the biggest story for the next few days is a potential or significant snowfall between Tuesday and Thursday this week, which could impact, um, the interviews on Thursday when you have one candidate flying in from upstate. So we're trying to make those decisions sooner rather than later with people making their travel plans. Realistically, the forecast is predicting rain tomorrow. It will turn into snow overnight and now continue through Thursday. Snow totals are certainly concerning, but it's really the timing of the storm that could have the most impact. Snow is expected to fall mid-morning and afternoon arrival dismissal's, uh, for our schools on Wednesday specifically. And that presents a lot of challenges for transporting children. Specifically, we can get them here, but maybe difficult to get them home. And especially if we're talking about our youngest learners, those are some challenges that we have to take into account earlier rather than later. We'll continue to be reviewing our weather data. Scott and I text usually somewhere about 5:30 on most days. During snow, you know, we text it as early as 3:00 in the morning. So we do stay in close contact as we're making these decisions. We also maintain very close contact with all of our local districts. Whether it's the H L High School or not, we do communicate quite extensively with local superintendents to make sure that we're all on the same page. If we do need to close school, we would use the e-learning day, meaning we're all learning for students, and they will not be paid off at the end of the year. As a reminder, we have five total e-learning days that we can use. We also have five emergency days that we can use, but those are tacked on to the end of the school year. So the e-learning days count as a big instruction, and we're good to go. Calendar stays intact. If we get to those five days, you have to use emergency days. That's when the calendar at the end of the year could change. So, having said all that, we are, we'll stay in contact first thing tomorrow morning, obviously. The sooner we can make a decision, we will, because I'm very sensitive to the impact that closing school has on our families and on our community. So we'll make sure that we have the information out as soon as possible. We have a few touch points tomorrow. Seven in the morning, we'll check in noon, we'll check again before school dismisses to see if we have any additional data on the website that makes us feel comfortable one way or another. And, you know, we'll be conservative. We'll make sure that we don't put anyone in a position to be unsafe. But we certainly value in-person learning as much as possible. So we'll give the information out to our families and our communities as soon as we have that decision made. But if we have enough information to make it before school is out, we'll certainly do that so that our families can move in. That's the end of my report. Are there any questions on either e-learning or, uh, what we call it? Any, any of those pieces?
I don't think so. Thank you. All right, the next set of items on the agenda are the action items. Um, number one, Heather Hill and Serena Hill playgrounds. May I have a motion to approve the Heather Hill north, Serena Hill east, and Serena Hill west playground, the focus, and order the equipment for some installation? Any questions?
Uh, question. Um, number one, I wanted to, um, to make it known that I appreciate and thank Mrs. Howland, superintendent, selected community, uh, members who are on the committee to proud your parents, teachers, and students. Appreciate the opportunity to ensure that the community has a chance to, they can see the rendering, provide, um, comments and suggestions and to go, you know, that extra mile to do that. So we want to say thank you. Appreciate what the administration staff did with that. Um, this, this will address the, uh, I'm not going to say the, the south. No, north. This, this will address the north playground. Um, and just clarification, we will come back around after we, um, looked at the playgrounds that needed the, the most attention, which is Heather and Serena, and then others will kind of follow in suit. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, but, you know, we've done some spot replacements, you know, at Heather or even Flossmore Hills on part of theirs. No rope ladder here or a slide there. The benefits of some of the changes that we've, sorry, the benefits of some of the changes that we implemented most recently is that we can reapply the number of the changed pieces that we put in this year to the new designs. But definitely, so we did, we have north and then east, west at Serena. We still have south at Heather that's going to need some attention, probably not a full rebuild, but certainly, you know, depending on how long we wait, it could either be a full replacement or just kind of revisions and remediation. And then western avenue, the playgrounds are newer, but again, just as those little things fail, we're in a good position now that we're on a schedule. And so if something goes out, you know, ordering a slide here and there, ordering a new rope carriage, those pieces to stay up on it. But then, okay, we've made these replacements for 10, 12 years. It's time to do a rebuild. So I think we'll have a better, we'll have a better plan to adjust all those pieces, David, moving forward.
Okay. Um, one of the things, one of the things that was, um, brought out was that, um, like, this I could imagine exists at all four elementary schools. But when the children go out to recess or when they go out to have outdoor activities, um, that some of the, the parents slash teachers, um, are, are curious if there's more that we can do with some of the blacktop areas. I know that, I talked to the administration, that they intend to redo the blacktop at Heather and make sure there's, I mean, house stacks and floor boxes, whatever those things are. And, um, so they were hoping that they can make sure that that's done in the south playground area and in the north playground area. So I guess K through two can do something, but it doesn't have, they don't have anything necessarily for the third to the fifth grade to have happen. So again, without knowing the layout, the painted areas on all the blacktops at all the schools, it's just something I'd like to bring up and make you look at. Um, and also, I think that there are some, um, some basketball rooms and nets and poles. Again, making sure that all of those are other functional, so again, give the children something to, to do when they go outside and have outdoor activities. Um, I guess the children sometimes are just standing around, not knowing what to do, and the teacher is doing their best to kind of keep them engaged, but it'd be good that, you know, something.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I think the, you know, that's one of those pieces, it's low cost, but could be high impact, especially what you talked about. Kids hanging out at recess is not what we want. It's like, for their grades, we want them moving and being able to learn, which we definitely think of.
Appreciate it.
Roll call, please. Lanier?
Yes.
Rouse?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Nelson?
Lee Strunk?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the proposed contract for maximum healthcare services?
Still moved.
Second?
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rouse?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Tron?
Yes.
Lee Strunk?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Nelson?
Grace?
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the resolution for the designation of a person or persons to prepare the census and budget?
Still moved.
Second?
Any questions?
Yes, can I hear a little more background on, on what this is all about? I mean, I've read it, you, um, how the, 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 the.
Just the board has it tested as a native formal person to build its budget every year. From that's this reason.
Yes, it's one of those random things in school where they're just supposed to do. And, you know, really, if anyone wants to take it, they're not allowed here.
We already, everyone already moved back to the table. I don't want my children to be frightened again. That's all it is. Guaranteed.
It's her third time, so she should be pro.
Yeah, her, yeah. Roll call.
Flacken?
Yes.
Nelson? Lee Strunk?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Tron?
Yes.
Rouse?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the contract with standard cycle for hazardous waste containers and disposal?
Still moved.
Any questions?
So we're just bringing this back. We've updated, it's an updated number on the cost for each building, and we are just covering the buybacks now, public running, thanks to Jackie and Kathy Canales, so this is time. Let's make sure we're covered for all that hard head.
Now, is this one, the cost went up?
If it went up, when we were communicating with them, we thought we were clear on what they were, we were asking for and giving. There was a difference. So essentially, they gave us one building for the year instead of all the buildings for the year. So that's what the cost went up.
Okay.
Roll call. Tron?
Yes.
Lee Strunk?
Yes.
Nelson?
Rouse?
Yes.
Flacken?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes, and the motion passes.
So as part of our recent discussions, we want to focus our conversations on the items that are the most important. So we broke it up the rest of the agenda to give you some information and discussion. Information, we would, we would certainly present to talk about any of them, but I'll show you more focus on if you have specific questions about any of those reports, to have the discussion items to review for presentations.
So with the information items, for lack of a better term, are these considered like the action items? Or, no, no, what's, what's phrase for this?
Consent agenda.
So are these the consent agenda items for discussion?
For discussion, okay. Because, you know, for example, we talked about the crowdfunding, the tax relief grant payment, at least at four separate meetings, and now it's just time. So we've talked about all of those pieces, just even the board posted on. Okay, we've talked about it several times before, especially in the levy process. Now we're paying it off. Here's how that will go. You know, you know, the, another good example, we have a student affiliation agreement with Vanderbilt. You know, we, we, every time then we'll get those. We've already done them with Prairie State, for example, or Governor State. We have little things like that to come through that aren't, we don't need a lot of conversation around because they're just good things. We hear those go with information, anything that is, if the word controversially looks at it, of course, that's in discussion. If it's talking about money, it's probably going to be in discussion. Items that we really want the board to wrestle with, we'll focus on the discussion piece. And then the information, of course, ask as many questions as you like. Transparency is key here. But that's just to kind of move the meeting. Really focus your own design on the pieces that are currently most important.
I think we also said that, um, because these are in the board report, if we have questions about any of the informational items, we can reach out to you or, you know.
Absolutely.
So I, I, I understand it, and I guess my question is more just in the subject header or title. Because it says information items, then it doesn't indicate who else you want to vote on that.
You will not say.
So we won't vote on it. So, no, 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 we'll stick to our same process. We discuss it one, and then the next. All right, we'll, we'll talk more about this on the call because I'm trying to see the difference between five and six. Although I understand there's nation, but six is a discussion item.
Six here actually go, we're going to talk to you about it.
Okay.
All right, for five, if you have questions about any of those, you can either email them ahead of time or you can ask them down. It's perfectly fine. But we won't do a full presentation on November financials because we haven't had a question on those really the last three years. Same thing with the December financial report, but if there's something that catches your eye or something that you'd like to talk about, it's a perfect time. We'll still provide the full reports so that you can read and consume the content. We just won't plan on doing a presentation for those items.
Got it. All right, thank you.
My pleasure.
Hey, for, are there any questions? First, I have, uh, under discussion, is there anyone in the board report?
Welcome, Rob Grossi. Thank you for coming, Rob.
Good evening, everybody. I received significant pressure since walking in to keep this thing brief, so I will try to keep this under five minutes. I can do that. Uh, for those who don't know me, my name is Rob Grossi. I attended Serena Hills and Flossmore Junior High School, and have been treasurer for the school district for over 30 years. Uh, in fiscal year 2021, uh, the pool of, of funds, uh, invested by our office, by myself, earned $10,572,000 in interest, uh, and that's for 20 school districts. With an average portfolio size of $664 million, this translates into a cash basis rate of return of 1.2 to 3%. By June 30th, the pool had approximately 450 different investments and CDs in 40 different banks across the country. District 161 earned $549,000 in interest during the fiscal year, and District 161 comprises approximately 5% of the pool. Uh, compared to the rate of return of other investments that we track, the monthly average yield for the former school leadership liquid asset fund was, um, two tenths, two one-hundredths of 1%. Uh, for a one-year treasury, it was one tenth of 1%. For a six-month, uh, CD, it was 17 one-hundredths of 1%. And three-year treasury, it was 24 one-hundredths of 1%. Uh, a brief economic summary of how it impacts, uh, the portfolio. Uh, the most important thing that determines our interest rates of our portfolio, because we offer a little bit to the Illinois Public Funds Act, and we can invest in things like stock market, commodities, and real estate, and so that's very limited, is, uh, interest rates, and the biggest driver of that is the Federal Reserve. So what the Federal Reserve does has a huge impact on the interest that, uh, rates and interest earnings that we receive. The, the Federal Reserve has two primary goals, to maximize employment, so to keep the economy strong enough to maximize the, uh, employment, but to not overheat the economy to the point where there's too much inflation. Uh, in March 2020, with COVID, the economy, as we all know, came to a brand new halt in unemployment jump of 15% as a result of Federal Reserve aggressively lowering interest rates to historically low levels to stimulate the economy, and they pumped trillions of dollars into the economy. And again, the theory is that they lower rates, more people will go out and borrow money to buy things, and that stimulates the economy. Uh, as a result of, uh, consequently, the interest rates on, on investments within our portfolio dropped to historically low levels. As a result of, one, the economy restarting aggressively once COVID fears subsided somewhat, uh, the trillions of new dollars of stimulus money funneling through the, uh, through the economy, and supply chain issues whereby demand for products are now outpacing supply. Inflation entered our world at a very aggressive rate. If you turn to page five, uh, you can see what, that this is month over month inflation in, for the, uh, for the month end of December 2021, inflation was 7% higher than it was last year. So I'm excited that this will have implications to a lot of your financial operations, which I'm sure you'll be discussing over the next several months. But you can see how inflation has grown significantly, uh, during the 2021 calendar year. Uh, if you turn to page five, this is, oh, excuse me, page six, top slide. This is my favorite slide, my people's relevant slide. Uh, this compares, uh, the number of people unemployed versus the number of job openings. And, and, uh, so the blue line represents unemployed, the number of people unemployed, and the red line represents job openings. So you can see the big spike up in blue was at the time when everybody got laid off or everybody got promoted or whatever, when, when COVID hit, so there were a lot more people unemployed than job openings. But you can see now, um, more than that, but the red line is now above the blue line. So the number of job openings is actually a lot of million people higher than the number of people that are unemployed. So, so there's a base, there's a big gap between supply and demand. And that too, you're witnessing that impact all the time and finding, having a hard time finding substitute teachers. Uh, the teacher pool is strong, and nurses, you know, things like that. So it's hitting the whole town. And so this is a concern as relates to future inflation because, uh, it could, it could translate into, uh, labor inflation or the cost, uh, of human labor in the world because of the supply and demand balance. Going back to the Federal Reserve. Going back to the Federal Reserve, uh, because their objective of low unemployment is met, they're now focusing on lower, on low inflation. Trying to slow down this heated inflation. So most economists right now, many economists right now are expecting the Federal Reserve, and the Federal Reserve has indicated they were going to do so, but they're going to start raising rates. Again, it's the opposite effect. They, they feel that if they can raise rates, it raises the lending rate, less people borrow money, and slows the economy down. So that's what's anticipated by the Federal Reserve. And, um, it's likely that it would result in interest rates starting to rise again from the historical low levels that they are right now. So we'll see how that, that plays out. Uh, if you turn to page nine, you can see the current portfolio. And blue bars represent what the portfolio, uh, breaks down in terms of duration, uh, of June 30, 2020, versus June 30, 2021, which is the red bars. And you can see that because, uh, at the end of the year, interest rates started trickling out a little bit. Later on, in maturities, we started to extend the maturities out to take advantage of that to try to capitalize and give a little higher interest rate. If you turn to page 11, you can see the composition of the portfolio. And the composition is basically determined by how, um, what's attracting the market, that always changes. So for example, banks were not aggressively looking for money because people weren't getting going out and borrowing money. They had a lot of money coming in through stimulus checks and whatever. So CD rates were very low. So the percentage of our portfolio, that when CDs got from 26% to 20%. Uh, the portfolio shifted during the year more towards corporate notes and government agencies. Uh, in terms of future investment strategies, we continue to closely watch action taken by the Federal Reserve and investor funds. Always with a focus on maximizing interest earnings within the overall strategy of minimizing risk. Uh, in terms of anticipating interest earnings for this upcoming fiscal year, I expect them to be significantly lower than in fiscal year 21 as most of our higher, higher-yield securities have maturity ready. And if the Fed does raise interest rates, the effects of them on interest earnings in the district probably won't be realized until the following fiscal year. I thank you for allowing me to present. I think I did it within five minutes, tried to, and, uh, if I would ever hear any questions, anybody would have.
I have a question.
Sure.
You, you kind of stick, you suggested something about the possibility of teachers' salary needing to go up as it relates to slowing the economy. Can you just speak about that just a little more and how that might impact us and the surrounding districts?
Sure. So, so, um, you know, I have the opportunity to work with a lot of school districts in, 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 uh, in different areas of their operations. Um, but, but there are certainly some, there are school districts that, because of their salary, have a hard time attracting or retaining teachers. So historically, there's always been, the challenge has been making sure you're competitive to the, to the, to the, to the surrounding school districts, that you could, that you could attract good teachers and you could retain good teachers. But with this new dynamic, now not only do you have to deal with that, but you also have to be, be competitive enough to, and, and, and set people to come out and become a teacher. It's, it's obviously a very challenging time to be a teacher right now with COVID and, and everything that's going on and, and, uh, and it's, it's so, so if, if, if the, if the supply of people willing to become teachers strengths, I want to choose teachers for an example, but if anything, that, and, and, and the demand is high, then, then school districts or, or corporations or whatever will need to raise their, uh, the payment levels in order to incent people to, to get off the chair and decide to become a teacher or whatever they want to be.
Sure. Good luck. Thank you.
You're welcome. Has our state, I know that for a long while, we still had unemployment benefits that were just continuing on and on and on. Is that still, um?
So, so from the federal government perspective, the incentive, the incentive that existed, the, the thing that kept some people working was that they were earning more money outward.
Correct.
And, and, and so that benefit has stopped at the federal level. Um, Illinois is, is, is one of the higher, um, they have one of the better benefits for unemployment. So that, that, that in theory could have a drag on Illinois per se, but, um, but, but that's still fun. Like, dude, now there's still people that have, maybe they still have some COVID money or, or, or whatever that haven't gotten, gotten back in. But, um, that's certainly a drag on, uh, the, the supply of labor. Uh, but it, but specific to the, the education market, you know, if you look at the colleges and everything, that there's less and less people going through to become teachers.
Regarding the, um, statement that you're providing partialistic strategies to us regarding the current investment strategies. Um, as I read through it, and I see that, um, again, and thank you for your work. It's very good.
Thanks.
Um, that you can't, you must deal with short-term cash flow.
Yep.
And then when I kind of look at, and I was listening to you also discuss the fact that, um, you're trying to basically get the greatest yield possible from money market. Then, uh, page of 10, you quite accurately described the CDs are basically creating an extra nothing. Um, and that the, uh, according to paper, the bank incorporated those, then so on and so on. That next paragraph to me is, is key though, that you, you then adjusted the, the percentage of funds in CDs down, and you increased the percentage of funds in the banks up. Um, is, are there any other, and I'm sure, I'm sure that this is on the board to answer this question, are there any other strategies possible to try to move that line and so flatten to try to get greater yield on the few strategies that we can actually implement?
That's a great question. And that's a question that every day I'm trying to address. It's, um, right now, there's really nothing out there. I, I had a meeting with a bank earlier, like the end of last week, and, and it was basically, let me know when you need money. And, and, you know, we can talk, you know, in other words, when you're willing to pay 1 quarter of 1% or something like that, you know, to, 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 I mean, I'll give you $4 million for a year or something like that. And then no one, no one's willing to do that now. So, so as long as, as long as people, with interest rates so low, as long as people are willing to buy their stuff at a low rate, it's hard, it's hard to get ahead, you know, no. There's no incentive to get 2% for, to, for a bank or a corporation to lend, to, to borrow money at 2% and they can go in the open market and get it at a half of 1%.
I get that. And, and thank you. So let me ask a different question. This might be a more speculative question. I'm sure your firm and other firms.
No, I'm not a firm.
Okay, I'm sure.
I'm a public, we're, we're, we're a public entity just like school.
Okay. I'm sure that there, the people in your field are also trying to find out other ways to, to, again, increase dividends, interest, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Are there any whispers, words, and influences being done at the local or federal level to try to see if things can move? Or this is just going to be the, the letter of the day? Because I'm sure that the feds also recognize that things aren't moving and that there's stagnation.
Well, you know, there's two sides to that, right? Low interest rates are, are bad in, in what we're talking about here. But for people that are getting mortgages and stuff like that, it's good. So it also depends on what side of, of, of the equation. Low interest rates could be, could be a good thing for people. Um, you know, the issue's beyond us, you know, we, even at $644 million, we're small potatoes in, in, in the world of, of finance. Um, so, I mean, there's a lot of school districts, there's, there's over 800 school districts. There's, in Illinois, there's a lot of school districts that all they're doing is basically keeping their money living. Because, because it's not, so, so they're earning 2 tenths, 2 one hundredths of 1%, which is basically what money market rates are, 2 to 5 one hundredths of 1%. And they're not taking the, uh, they're not buying a three-month CD for 10 one hundredths of 1%, small dollar ones. What, what I'm doing is trying to get, capture as much as possible, it's, it's little increments, but capture as much as possible so that that 1.23% yield, my goal is always to far exceed what other school districts are earning. And I, and I feel comfortable that, that there's a good track record of us being able to do that. By being able to diversify, because we're so large relative to other school districts, you know, we have 600 different investments. Um, the, the school districts have healthy fund balances right now, so if a situation arises, we could invest that longer. Um, so, 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 um, so I'm, you asked the right question, because that's exactly what I try to do every day.
And I appreciate it.
No, thanks.
Just, just to kind of piggyback on that line of question, certainly there was an extended period of time where this was a varied situation, from '09 through '15, '16, then we saw rates go up and come back down. And we're back in a position where we're expecting rates to go up, which should, as you indicated, put us in a better position for our interest earnings, not next year, but the following year. So are you in a situation where you maintain existing strategies to take advantage of that rise, or will you switch things up?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if, if, if things start moving, uh, it's, it's, it's an interesting dynamic because even if it's a $600 million portfolio, it's not a static portfolio. Because we get in every year about 600, approximately, 600 million comes in from the school district's taxes on state and federal government, and they spend about $600 million in salaries and benefits and capital projects or whatever. So there's always money coming in and out. It's, it's a fluid thing. So when interest rates rise, that's good from the perspective of we're getting new money and we can invest it at higher rates. But for the static portfolio, what's value lives down because, you know, because you bought lower investment. So it tends to be relatively static, but if the yield curve starts rising where, uh, money markets are 2 tenths of 1, 2 one hundredths of a percent, but a, but a three-year CD becomes 1%, then, then we'll, we'll be shifting more money into that, uh, into, into that, those areas. So yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Rob. Good to see you.
Thanks.
Okay, my last round, if you remember, is the school, 2022, 2020 year school.
Absolutely. We're very excited to have this conversation. One, three that we'll ideally have this week, starting with the Board of Education, following up with the Baltimore Education Association tomorrow, take care of that. And then our leadership team this coming month, they have a couple pieces. To point out, the following school year will start on Monday, August 15th, it's about 10:00. That will be worth it this year, that'll be for staff and then students on the 18th. Last day of school, tentatively, will be Friday, June 2nd, and it still takes into account our e-learning days and emergency days and of that nature. We are not perfectly aligned with the high school and, uh, let's be sure we're not because of us not reaching out or being willing to collaborate. Unfortunately, when you go to separate districts, they can be on their own page and timeline. So we've done our best to try to create some consistency, um, wherever we can. But for example, we have to take veterans' day off. It's a contractual piece. We have no options there. We won't be in school. HF will not. Or, no, we will. HF will be in school, we will not. All right? And so we'll run into a few of those situations that are just unavoidable. For the most part, we've done our best to travel along those calendars. Are there any items that the board would like us to relook at, especially if we're talking with our teachers and parents for the rest of the year?
Veterans' day is contractual for us. It's not as good as.
Correct.
I'm, I'm trying to understand something. So without getting too much into this. HF normally does share.
Typically, the three districts get together and work out a calendar.
And that has not happened.
So you did not. They chose to go a different path this year.
So I, and I, the reason I'm trying to ask this one question is that I, I know sometimes when that doesn't line up, transportation issues and extracurricular activity things and stuff gets off and it gets to be a mess. So with this calendar, we're kind of just shooting in the dark compared to whatever's going on?
I, I don't know that we're shooting in the dark, but they've made choices, they made, they've made different choices than we would make. And who says we never have a chance to talk about that with them before they approve the calendar? We can only go based on the information that they've provided and what will work in district wants to do.
So how will this affect us? I mean.
We will inevitably have times where we have kids who need to take a high school course and the high school will be in session, but we aren't.
Got it, got it.
You know, we try to limit those.
That happens now though, just.
It, it does happen now. This, now it's more impacted by late starts or different things that they do in their calendar. But this will, in the past, for example, we've been lined up. But one of the peculiar things, for example, the reason you start early is so that you can have finals done before winter break so that kids can ramp up that learning and that information and go home and come back and start. Well, I think there's still plenty to do that, but whereas, you know, 280 school days, those first two quarters are around 90 and 90 is good to go. Well, now it's somewhere around 77 and 110, right? And they've made, we've got to make choices that, like that, that we are now stuck with because we don't have an option. We do send a number of kids to high school, we have to align through those courses. But you can see how, you can see how their decisions impact us and we try to respond to those in this.
Okay, my, my, my last two questions. So is there, is there really anything we can do except kind of go with this?
Well, we can, no, of course, we can make any adjustments.
Right, absolutely.
But in terms of aligning with, uh, other, with 233. Their calendar is done, so we actually took that and tried to align specifically.
Yeah, yeah.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, at this point, I think unless we've missed something, and that's why we're meeting with the teachers and parents over the next couple of days, we have taken a look at all those pieces and tried to align everywhere.
Okay.
Even down to, you know, the, the high school switch weekends work, right? So the things that we have never done in the past, they've decided to implement this year without communication? And we just have to respond to that.
I am, I am, I, I appreciate what you've done. I can see it. I'm looking at both calendars. I'm a little worried about the breaks in the holidays for families that have, like a freshman and a ninth grader, a second grader and a junior. Um, it makes it almost impossible. I mean, somebody will miss school somewhere, especially for the longer breaks. Seems like spring break is the same.
Yeah, spring break is the same.
But December break is a little, I don't know, maybe they're just, you know, maybe just.
When do they start for December break? I don't know.
According to their calendar.
So according to their calendar, 22nd is the day of school, 23rd is a teacher work day. And then that Friday, they're off. No, 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 yes.
It says winter recess begins December 26th and ends January 31st.
Well, they're counting.
I think Friday is the eighth.
Yeah, so I believe they have a teacher work day Friday.
Yeah.
Right? So that would be the 23rd because then it's Christmas Eve, Christmas. So officially, winter break starts on the 21st, Monday, the 26th.
Yeah.
But as we would, you know, stop on the 22nd because we don't have the additional teacher work days that they have. They have, there is a few days and they have a whole country of teacher work days. We would end up on the 22nd, their teachers will be in session on the 23rd, and then we really just have time to make a choice. Do we want to extend to the autumn, to June, which pushes that date that past the 2nd, probably to 6 or 7.
If that doesn't, my next question is, are we moving our calendar this way or this way?
This way.
I'm sorry, we're starting later.
Yeah, and, and, you know, that, that's okay in the, you know, kind of short term. But as we're, you know, having these long range planning conversations, we know at some point in '24, we're going to want to start again. But, yeah, exactly, we're going to want to get done year before early and probably plan to start, you know, closer to the end of August to get as much room as possible, potential projects.
Are you comfortable with the form of this point?
I'm comfortable. I, I can also live with aligning all the breaks. Again, that's, that's where we struggle because we know how impactful that is on our families and. how impactful that is on our families, and making sure that where's aligned is possible. So we can certainly have that conversation, like I said, it just will keep us back.
So, so is there any other time period besides any comeback from Christmas break that is a significant concern?
There's random days that don't land up on both ends, but the biggest thing is the December holiday.
When do they go back?
The ninth?
The ninth, you're right, the ninth.
Oh.
And where's the fifth?
Where's the fifth? Right, they change holiday days, which is kind of strange, I've never seen that before.
Correct.
They just, it's like their own.
Is that some philosophy you want, that we don't know about?
It hasn't been explained to me if there is.
Okay.
So, with this, we'll take a look at the breaks, and maybe we can come up with a couple of options. You know, one, the six closest, with any, you know, any tweaks that we can find, or any other courses that we can just align a little bit more closely. And then we can bring this version and, you know, push winter breaks, you can see what that looks like, not only on the winter break side, but it will really impact the end of the school year, uh, pushing up to that January fifth, or June and July.
I had, I might say that.
Okay, yeah, that's no problem.
How can I understand the big difference, because if I'm reading this correctly, it says their semester ends the second, so are we saying that they have an additional week of finals, because ours ends on the second, so is that something I misunderstood?
Are you looking at the twenty two, twenty three calendar?
Yes.
You see January second?
June.
Oh, June, yeah, the end, yes, June.
Both, both districts end on June second.
Right.
Right?
Are you wondering why there's extra days?
What, what extra days are there?
It's how they're using their days, or their friends.
Are you asking why they come back on the ninth, and then on the second? That I'm not sure.
I, I assume it's a teacher day on the.
We, I can take, uh.
They have extra teacher work days put in their calendar, so then they work on, like, Blasky Day, they work on Veterans Day, so it works out to be the same.
I, I just, I guess I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear, it says both school districts end on June second, and I'm trying to see whether the concern.
The end day, yeah, the last day is the same, the power of the guts, the end, the end, like, the, the December break isn't the same.
Right.
And then, like, Lincoln's birthday is not Lincoln's birthday, and, you know, some of the other holidays don't match.
And they're not closed, the week Thanksgiving.
Well, that's always.
And then that, I, I don't.
So the concern would be if we were to adjust to align with the break, then it would add additional days for us on the back end?
Yes.
That they don't have.
Right, because we have to extend the December break, so that we can come back, we can come back on the ninth.
And what's our day break now for first semester compared to second semester?
In this, we've had the calendar, this version, uh, this version is, uh, weighted toward the second half of the school.
Okay.
One hundred and eighty, right?
One eighty, there's probably, I don't know, there's seven days in the second half.
Okay.
And, and, and we can have a same, you, you're going to come back later with the proposed start in May time, for the school day? No, I, I don't think we're anticipating any changes to that current, so if I have to go later, but if definitely go early, I don't believe so. Okay, so our back deck will bring two options, we'll talk to, as I mentioned, our back gates, we'll have our distribution team will bring one that is this version with any, you know, anything that we missed, any small adjustments that we can make, and then we'll bring another version, which is basically this version, but we'll make sure that the breaks and things, if there's any breaks and days that we can match with the high school, possibly, we will do that, and then we'll bring that in, what kind of analysis will we get? Is that working?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, my last question, so the, the eight forty five and the seven forty five, I'm sorry, eight forty and the seven forty five, that allows us to have the best possibility to make sure transportation needs are met?
Yes. Okay, and do we have the buses and drivers now, but I think it's a long time to. This second, sure.
Okay.
Not even the second.
I'm done, I'm, I'm, all this is a conference.
Another minute, it can change.
Okay.
Okay, next, oh, that's it, there are no more items. Maybe I have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Uh, there.
Hi.
Any votes? Getting adjourned, I don't know, thank you.
Here we go. You heard it? I've been on your phone, thanks for coming, please see you guys.